Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Mr. Town Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Councilman Goldsmith. Councilman Trolinger.
Assent.
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And would you all please stand up and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America.
Thank you very much. And we just lost Mr. Town Clerk. Have you all had an opportunity to look at the agenda? And if so, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward four, Ward three. I move that we accept the January 10th meeting minutes as presented.
Or the January 17th one, either one. We're doing the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said meeting minutes.
Are the agendas good?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna just?
It's fine.
It's, it's a new, it's, it's good. All right. Do I have a second to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. And now do I have an approval for the minutes for January 10th? Try that one again.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. I move to approve the minutes of January 12th, 2023, as presented.
Or January 10th.
January 12th, January 10th, that's 2023.
So January 10th.
Okay, I got it right.
Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that one, too.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor for the January 10th minute meeting? Indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That brings us to our next item on our agenda. Chief, would you come on down and?
Sure.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes. So tonight, Mayor and Council and our Police Department, as well as just members of the community want to recognize, unfortunately, there was an awful situation in our community on September 27th with a, which ended up being in a fatal fire. But we had a couple of residents in our community that through their training, experience, and background did not stand aside. They took it upon themselves to do whatever there was necessary to try to preserve life and try to take care of the situation. And I want to recognize these two individuals that are here tonight, me, Rae, Noel Vogt, and Justin Christopher Vogt. As far as what happened that evening, the information we have is that, of course, and it, and it's, it's something we experienced here as town council. We heard the sirens. We were getting alerts as it was going on. And we heard there was a fire in Kings Grant that was an awful situation. As the night began to develop and we knew that it was a serious situation, while people, you know, in the neighborhood were coming around trying to figure out what the hubbub was about while the fire trucks were in the, in the neighborhood, me, Rae, a registered nurse, saw, as she was pulling into the neighborhood, the smoke coming from the home. Justin Christopher, 19-year-old, who's a volunteer firefighter at Hughesville Fire Department, was also in the home at Wiltshire Drive. And me, Rae, was, happened to be on the phone with him at that time. Without any hesitation or concern for their own safety, they drove to the neighborhood entrance. They gained access to the scene. They got the attention of any occupants. They tried to open windows, doors, et cetera. And this is where the training and the care for people take over. The logic and concern for themselves, as we know for first responders, goes to the side when they see moment of crisis. They run to it. And we're so grateful for that. As fire departments began to arrive, Justin Christopher immediately engaged those first responders, helped pulling hose, positioning ladders, all while still without his gear that he's so used to using. Once he obtained the gear, he made his way into the home to battle the ongoing fire. While me, Rae, assisted with the homeowner, she battled to provide CPR while we waited for EMS to arrive at that time. We know that the event was a traumatic one for the families involved in an awful situation. But in times of these crises, we see heroes that are our normal, everyday neighbors, our friends, our family members, who take it upon themselves to sacrifice. And we wanted to honor you today in the presence of the town council and the mayor and our Police Department and our friends and neighbors. So if you could come up, we have an award to present to you today. And if Chief and our council can come down and meet them, since this is a community event here, thank you so much.
And Donna, you did a very good job. Don't get, don't get in too much of a pardon. He kept it a secret. We are so. Thank you very. And you know, it's a very special award because it says on it, it says, it's in grateful recognition, acknowledging and appreciate the safe, the swift, brave, and heroic lifesaving efforts, efforts of both of you on this day. And it's, has a sheep on there. And it's, Chief, can you explain what the sheep?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's the sheepdog. And it's those who are willing to stand in the gap for the community to be the protectors of the flock. About one half of 1% are the sheepdogs. And others, others just, they don't have that in them to run towards danger, run towards gunfire, run towards a fire. So we really appreciate what you did that night. You're difference makers in the community.
I would just like to mention, not a lot of people know, our last name Vogt roughly translates in German to protector. But I thought it'd be interesting if that's wanted to be known.
Well, thank you both on your service as first responders. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Chief.
That's all right. You all are free to stay or, and the meetings are always enlightening, or celebrate your first responders out there. But thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Town Clerk, do we have anybody who have signed up in person to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have one person signed up, Ms. Larnock.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Don't get that straight. You go see me a lot, so you might as well get the thing.
I love that. Please state your name.
Okay.
And whether you live in the incorporated town limit. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes, that would be blessed.
Let's see what I can do here. My name is Maggie Larick, and I do live within the town of La Plata. And I have a statement that I want to read from one of my friends who could not be here tonight in person and for some reason can't manage to get signed on to the computer. So she emailed me this before, before I came over tonight. Says, "Good evening. My name is Donna Jenkins. I reside at 5520 Little Brook Drive. I'm providing comments on Resolution 2301, a revision to the town council rules of procedures. I urge the council to pause on accepting the recommendations as written and consider the following. First, changing rules and process should be a rigorous, championed with great thought and input of the public. I strongly urge the council to continue to use Resolution Vice, a majority vote of a quorum, which would be potentially two of the five voting members. This leaves too much power in the hands of too few and opens the town up potentially to the appearance of collusion. There should be checks and balances in public policy, which is Good Practice 101. Policies and procedures are not for the convenience of the voting members, but to provide clarity and transparency to the constituents they serve. Voting by majority of a quorum would defeat the entire Section 111 of purpose, but specifically would not preserve a spirit of cooperation amongst the members or give the citizens an opportunity to participate, not just witness. Secondly, I'd like to draw your attention to Section 43, Distribution of the Agenda. While I appreciate the effort that goes into creating an agenda, I would urge the council to consider the agenda and materials to be discussed be published a minimum of five business days prior to the meeting, recognizing that this still adds time to get items into the cycle. The benefits far outweigh the disadvantages. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act and in good governance, each of you have assured some of the public that you want input. Simply put, the workings of government are not the constituents' full-time position. They are juggling their jobs and life. If you want participation and thoughtful input into a product, you need to give the public time to participate. Using today's meeting as an example, the agenda and materials were seeped on Friday with 61 pages to read, digest, analyze, and potentially provide invaluable input. Looking into Section 61, I would strongly urge the council to consider a quorum of four, allowing for diversity of thought, potential ties, and providing the necessary checks and balances of good government. And lastly, I'd like to applaud you for the draft strategic plan in this packet. I'm hoping there will be a period of public comment to ensure, once adopted, I can, it can reflect public opinions. Thank you for your time. And like I said, that was Donna's statement that she could not be here in person. She couldn't get on the computer, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Maggie. And Mr. Town Clerk, has anyone else signed up in person?
No, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to 4.1, which is the Town Council Procedures. Director Phipps.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, you have before you a memorandum outlining some, a couple of changes to the Town Council procedures. Do you have any questions for me regarding those changes?
I will open it up for Council. Do you have any questions for Director Phipps?
Yes, question. That was the discussion, I'm sorry. General 711, from our public here. President, we did this close with us.
Thanks. Appreciate it. I always need an attorney to help. I guess I glossed over the idea that we can actually get by if two people voting on something if we only have a three for a quorum. And that does give me some concern. I would like to think that we would have to have at least three people voting on something as far as ordinance and such to, to give the full spectrum of what the council would be looking at. And that's really the only thing I think I have a concern with. Thank you for bringing it up.
Could you address that?
We can change, it was a draft. And so we can change anything before you adopt it. It is, it is a revision. So the existing, already adopted procedures are in place. This language is new to this, these procedures, so.
So it says, if, if this is what we are referencing, definition of a process to revise rules of procedure by affirmative vote of a majority of the quorum.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's meaning just if we have all five of us, a majority of the quorum, just, you're saying it's only two? Because the quorum is three?
That would be correct.
That's. It's my understanding that a majority of a quorum means the majority of the individuals present. So in the event that we have a meeting and we only have three members present, the majority would be two.
Correct.
If we have four, the majority would be three. If we have five. So it's not saying, and that's what I wanted the clarification for. So it's not saying that of the three, just say this, these three voted yes and these two voted no, you'd have to have two out of the three of us, because we're quorum, to do that. That's not, that's not what I interpreted it as. And, and thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, as saying that as well. So it's a majority of the quorum. Whatever the quorum is, it could be three, meaning that it's whatever is sitting here.
Correct.
And voting. Okay. So it's not two, a quorum, it's not the majority of the quorum of two, unless there's only three here.
Yeah, I think that's the.
That's two people. Then a majority of the quorum would be two people. The, the language can easily be rewritten as a majority of the council. I believe the concern, you already have a.
And everything else. And, and all of our other legislation. And, and it's in our code as quorum. I think it, in my opinion, it's fine as that. Because that's what we have. Otherwise, I think we're going to have to go through and, and change the language throughout the entire code if you're eliminating quorum. It just needs to be a point of clarification that the majority of the quorum means whatever's up here, take a quorum. That's, the quorum has to vote on, not slicing into quorum and then the majority of quorum, whatever the quorum is. Are we okay with that? Or is that as clear as much?
I have difficulty with that.
I do as well. When we're talking, and I, I think the concern is substantive changes can happen without the majority of the council. And look, we, we still need to get things done. I think as council understands, when we've got quorum, we can't have the town government be at a complete halt. But if we're talking about substantive changes and rules of procedures, which could dictate the entirety of how we do run business, that, that may be different. And you can still have, maybe you have the minimum three threshold, because that covers if we have four, rather than a three and, and two vote, you know, in favor.
Well, in order to have a vote, we have to have a quorum. So we have to, minimum have three. So if there's only three of us up here.
Yeah, I think that's the concern, is if there's three, then I could, you could approve a change to the document with two members of council, which is less than a majority of the entire council. It's the worst case scenario, I would say. But it's still something to consider.
But do you halt?
Well, that's what Councilman Trolinger gets to.
For some reason, two people are out for two meetings, whatever it is, do we not have business as usual?
Madam Mayor, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And that's what, and that's what Councilwoman Bryant Ward said. The intent is to make sure you have a quorum. If there's only two of us up here, we're not having a, a meeting where we're allowed to vote. So again, where Councilman Trolinger said, do you, do you halt moving forward if the perfect storm that you have two council members missing, do you stop on that?
Councilman Jenkins, Madam Mayor, Ward four. I have, I have a concern, again, you know, I understand majority is three and three, two to one. But I would hope, though, that if we have two members missing, and it's an important vote on a big issue, that we would, at least from my perspective, that we would delay that vote until we have everybody here. And frankly, if the government stops then, but I'd rather, I, I feel a lot more comfortable if we have everybody here. So we hear the full breadth of everybody's opinion and input.
If I may, we are only talking about voting on the revision to these procedures, not to resolutions as a whole or any legislation. We're only talking about, this language only pertains to this document.
So then that, that doesn't apply to?
Annexation.
That precise development plan or annexation of those kind, okay.
No, it's only.
Thank you for that clarification.
I do not have a problem with that language for the introduction, because it's only pertaining to our rules of procedures. So it's not a vote, and thank you for that. It's not the annexations, it's not resolutions, it's not ordinances.
Correct.
It's just this one right in front of us. So.
The other substantive change to this document was the listing of all the documents, the official documents that the council might issue. Just so that's spelled out.
Councilman Goldsmith, are you still?
With the clarification, if this only pertains to this specific document.
Correct.
I can handle that.
Yeah. Yes.
Councilman Trolinger?
I, so I think if we're changing rules and procedures, we should have a minimum of three in favor of it. I get, you know, that we've separated between doing business as a, as a government versus modifying how we do things. So I, I'd like for a minimum of three on that.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, wait a second. Councilman Jenkins?
I would concur with Councilman Trolinger that I would, I would feel more comfortable with three.
Okay. This will come back to legislation.
Can we make it in there to say as the, a majority of the quorum with a minimum of three voting in concurrence? And that way, it might be if they only have three, then all three have to vote that way. Majority of the quorum allows you to cover it with four, then you have to have three. And if you have five people, we all have theater day, then you still have to have three. So it's a minimum of three.
Could you explain a little bit more how the rules, the Town Council rules of procedures for this document only, could you explain, so it's crystal clear, exactly what this document that we're voting on as a majority of quorum for the, of the town council, how is that impacted? As I said, it's not a resolution, it's not ordinances, it's not, it's just the way that we govern while sitting up here at the dings.
Correct. This is a living document, so it can be changed. These are the procedures adopted by the council as, as a team, so that you can complete your, your work in the most streamlined way possible. It shouldn't be easy. It should be rigorous and thoughtful, obviously. But I'm, I'm not sure how to answer you, Madam Mayor.
Director Phipps, could we use the example of putting items on the agenda as we changed? That was a previous change, right? So we, we have basically a request form now to get items on the agenda. That would be an example of a policy and procedure change.
Yes.
Right. So for example, if we had, yeah, so if we had three members here, right, two voted for it, the rest of us would be bound by that new policy and procedure, whether there was input or not.
Correct.
Obviously, we would like to think that we can all work together. But you plan for the vices, not the virtues, is, is my concern. Because, look, these are, I mean, who knows, right? So, you know, my opinion doesn't change. I just wanted to give a concrete, practical example of one, if there's a better one. But.
That also gives the opportunity to, for the next group of three people to come change it at the next meeting. It does make things easier, but then it makes them also perhaps a little inconsistent to change the rules that, that frequently.
I'm having a hard time with having a number saying three in there, because that's, if, for some reason, but this is our job, we're elected officials, we are supposed to be here on Tuesdays. Life happens. And I know we can, we are allowed to be, if it's an emergency, virtual. But I have a hard time saying that our job is to be here. And if people aren't doing their job consistently, then we're going to push that off. I don't like the number three in there at all. Majority of the quorum, we have, we can only run a meeting when we have a quorum. And it's only for the procedures, such as adopting the agenda. That was one of the things, approving the agenda.
Yeah, I think we've all kind of said where we're at. I mean, we, we all kind of know where we're at. I would just say that policies and procedures are one of the most important things that you do, because it dictates how we operate. And if you're looking for the will of the council and how to proceed, it's not, I mean, you know, there are going to be all sorts of reasons why you may end up with three. But if you're looking for us to.
Well, for example, we have three, move it forward, right?
Sure. Exactly. Right. So, correct.
We have the full council and three of us said we're fine with the introduction the way it's written. So would mean we're moving forward.
Right. Yeah. If that's your, I think everybody had kind of weighed in. So, yeah, that's the way.
Then it's the will of the council to move forward with this into the legislation section.
Do we have any questions on Section 85 or even 6?
Madam Mayor, I, I do have another question. There was a comment made that about having the agenda out five business days. So that would be what? So it's five business days would be?
A week in advance.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Is that?
If you have five business days, you'd have to do Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Thursday, Wednesday. So as soon as, if you're doing business days, as soon as we finish this meeting tomorrow, they have to have an agenda meeting to, for next week. It is by per code, unless there's an extenuating circumstance, the town manager has approved, has to have it done by noon on Friday, correct? And then if not, it's the town, at the town manager's discretion. The goal is noon. If something comes up, like we had Mr. Town Clerk out last week, and he's the one that runs the, again, so they were slipped today. But that is, I don't know if staff could get it together even more, because you have all the department heads have to put in by Thursday, and then the legislative team has to put it together. So I, I understand that request. It is in code that we need to have it published by Friday at noon, unless there are extenuating circumstances. And that is the goal that I believe the town, I mean, the town manager and Town Clerk can try and adhere to. And we get it at the same time. So it's not like.
No, I understand.
People get it any earlier than we do. We get it at the same time when it's published online, just so the public knows that. When it's published online, that's when we get to see it. And we do our homework over the weekend, 61 pages.
Well, sometimes it's larger than that, as we all know.
Last time. So, yes.
Okay.
Right. So, yes, it is.
That's a better explanation. Thank you.
The consensus is to move this forward to legislation. All right. Next is the Ethics Code Revision. Why don't you just take that one, too?
Okay. Since I'm here, this one will be way easier. No amendments are allowable at this point, because our Ethics Code revisions were approved by the State Ethics Commission. And were any amendments to be made, they would have to be cleared again at their next, at the next meeting of the State Ethics Commission.
And that was the one that we had looked at prior, went up to the state, the state blessed it, and it's just coming back to us. More like an informational thing that we will see it in as legislation.
Correct.
Okay.
In conjunction with that, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 I'm gonna.
In conjunction with that, the, the revisions were reviewed by our Ethics Commission that met yesterday. In conjunction with that, the, the revisions were reviewed by our Ethics Commission that met yesterday. Those, these changes have been incorporated into the financial disclosure forms that you all received today. And if I receive one back, thank you, Councilwoman. We met with the town attorney, uh, went through the, uh, updated financial disclosure forms that were revised by our town attorney. The town commission, or I'm sorry, the Ethics Commission adopted those forms, which precipitated them going out today. They also elected Torina Ollie, Ms. Trina Ollie, as the chair. She had been appointed as an alternate, but between amongst themselves, they decided to, uh, kind of rearrange. And Torina is chair, very excited about being, so.
Any questions for Director Phipps on that? All right, we'll be seeing you in a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, pavement overlay and maintenance director, Stahl.
Council. I bring before you tonight our pavement overlay and maintenance contract that, uh, we would like to award. The, um, as most of you know, for many years, we have always done a piggyback on one of the local, uh, contracts from one of the bigger jurisdictions. In this case, we had been utilizing the Calver County contract for many years. And through them, we were utilizing C A Bean here in town to do a lot of paving. We had done that and, and for us as a smaller jurisdiction, it alleviates a lot of the challenges that we have with going through a, a full bid process. But in this case, we had waited long enough and we needed to go out and to do something, um, and, and put out the full public bid. We did that back in the fall and we opened the bids on December nineteenth. Excuse me, I think December sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken. So when we received the bids, we actually received four bids, uh, wholesome, ECM, Finley, and C A Bean. One of the things, just to point out to you, that was a little bit confusing, um, about the totals. And that is, we total everything up and that is for bid purposes only. And the reason that we do that, and I'll show you a, a good example of it in a minute, but is because there are so many different bid items here. We try to weight them accordingly as to what makes the most, the biggest bang for the buck. And so what happened in this situation? Clearly, the bituminous concrete surface asphalt, the nine and a half millimeter, is where we're doing the most, uh, uh, dollar volume from the town's standpoint. What we did was we had an estimated annual quantity of four thousand tons. We did that on every single one of those line items. We put in a, a potential of what we could possibly do. And then when they bid everything, we add up everything to get a total at the bottom. And the reason that you do that is so that if there's a difference, if one bidder has a better price on surface asphalt and another bidder has a, a better price on, uh, base asphalt and another bidder has a better price on patching and things like that, that we don't sit in here trying to weigh them at a later time. We do that as part of the bid overall. So that's what created the total. It is not going to be necessarily what we do as far as the budget is concerned. I just want to point that out to you. We're not going to be spending in one year, uh, six hundred and forty thousand dollars generally with the, with the asphalt bidder. These were done specifically for the bid to total it up. And I'll give you the example, if you look at, for instance, um, on the, Finley asphalt, you can see that their price for bituminous concrete surface, the nine and a half millimeter, which is item number three on the Finley bid, they came in at a hundred and twelve dollars, a hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-six cents per ton. That's actually the second lowest bid that we received for surface asphalt. However, when you added up all of the other items, you find they were nine hundred and thirteen thousand. So they were low on the surface asphalt, but they were very high on the others and they came in in the total as the highest bidder overall. So that's why we put these totals in here. The, um, as you can see on all of these, C A Bean was very interested in our business. They bid this very, um, very tight, as far as I was concerned. Liquid asphalt, as you know, with all oil products have gone up dramatically. But he bid this at one hundred dollars a ton for our surface asphalt, which comparatively is a very, very good price for the town of La Plata. I, in talking to Charles County and talking to some of the other county people in some of the other counties, they're probably going to end up piggybacking on us and not the usual situation of us piggybacking on them. So I bring this before you tonight. I recommend to you that we approve, uh, the town manager to be able to sign a contract, an award to C A Bean. Uh, this is five one-year contracts. And so we're looking forward to, um, uh, signing this with, uh, C A Bean. The only adjustment that they will get on this is the factor that we flat factor in for the liquid price. And so we, we have in the bid that they can adjust that based on whether the liquid price goes up or down. So, um, we will do it in this first fiscal year when we pave in the spring, it will be at a hundred dollars a ton. If there's an adjustment, if there's a, an increase in the amount of, uh, the cost of the liquid asphalt, there's a liquid asphalt index that we have and we look at that and we can adjust that as five percent of the price because liquid makes up five percent of the mix for that. So we adjust that. It is, there's a formula actually in our bid package for that. And we would adjust that for next year, for next fiscal year. So if we paved in the fall, we could potentially see a, a minor increase, um, if there's increases in the liquid asphalt price. So I bring this before you today, I think the staff did a good job.
I was gonna say, you, you did an amazing job with this. It's, uh, there's never a guess when you have something that you bring before us that you have done your homework. So, um, I thank you for that very much. Uh, council, do you have any questions for Director Stahl? We may see this, if we have the consensus to move forward as legislation.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question, maybe two.
Okay.
Is it, so we, so when you talk about paving, we just, we're putting asphalt on top of asphalt. How often do we have to do that?
We try to do it about every twenty years. We run everything on a twenty-year lifespan for our roads. We don't like to, we, we do have to mill asphalt out at the curb line because you want the asphalt to lay even with the curb. So we will mill out about five feet and we will taper it out. What happens is the road in the center does build up over time. And it's, for instance, I, we're, we're working on a water leak today in Kings Grant on West Moreland Court. Our normal asphalt for a street is about four inches, but because that road had been overlaid, it is actually six inches of asphalt on that court where we're cutting through there because we've overlaid that road. And it's not a bad thing, it's certainly a good thing to have thicker asphalt, it will hold up even longer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilman Jenkins, word four, again, thanks a lot for the work and effort. So you said this is a five-year contract?
It is.
And I assume you are, if you have, you've already developed like a priority list of what you want to.
We will bring that to you, um, a little bit later after winter has.
Right, okay.
We're planning to start paving sometime probably in April. Um, and we will bring a priority list to you at that point because we adjust it all the time based on how winter.
Yeah.
Tears roads, of course, now with like West Moreland Court, we've cut a huge section out of there. So we'll probably have to do some paving over in there. But we always bring the list forward and you can see the prioritized list. It doesn't necessarily mean that all of those streets get paved in the one year. We actually, I'll work together with Martha and with Karina and we work on what that final number is in what we get in our H U R dollar, our Highway User Revenue Dollar. And then we always like to have a figure in there for a, a little bit of extra in there. We always try to keep a fund balance in that account. And, you know, usually I would say our estimate for this year is that we'll pave about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, uh, in overlay for this year. And we keep about a hundred thousand in fund balance in that situation. We also will do about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of striping. So we'll use this, as you can see, there's, there's bid prices in here to do the striping. So we'll do some additional striping, uh, as well. And then, to be honest with patching, we'll have to do some work in patching and that goes to the utility and that kind of depends on how many water main breaks or that kind of thing.
So it's safe to assume that this is, uh, in the current budget and there's no issue with the budget?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry to miss this.
And then.
You can verify that, I, it is in the budget, uh, in all three of those categories.
And then just one final, I guess, comment and request. Once you have your list, uh, i- is it possible, and I know it's, it depends upon weather conditions and all that, is there a way to notify the public when and where you're going to be paving?
We certainly can, we certainly put it.
Because last year, I, I, I know last year you had weather and, and, and I get that and, but there are a number of folks who reached out to me and complained that there was, uh, one particular, I, I don't remember the road, but it was, it was, they had to pave it and unfortunately they had a delivery coming and the truck couldn't get through because there was paving operations. I know that's hard, but, but i- it would be beneficial as best you, we could, just to advertise on the website. On this day, we're gonna, we think we're going to be doing this, this and this, that's all.
We certainly can try.
Yeah, I know it's difficult.
It's very, you know, as we're working through things, we get delayed as weather is concerned. And, and it all depends on the streets too. We can estimate that, you know, clearly a paving company likes to do about four hundred tons a day with us, four to five hundred tons. Um, but there are some days that they only get two hundred tons just because we're doing cul-de-sacs. You know, we're doing streets that require more time and more milling. And so sometimes, uh, it's, but we certainly will, uh, be happy. It's a public meeting that I'm going to present.
Right.
A, a road list at, we'd be happy to present that. And we'd be happy to present when we plan to start.
Right.
And that we would assume that it's going to be about a three-week.
Right.
Process. And we can even group them together and say, you know, we assume that the first, and because as you know, we always try and divide this up throughout each council district so that we're not doing all the paving in one council person's district. We do try to spread it throughout the town. So it's, it's not, it's also prioritization by road and that. But it's also, we do make sure that we do a little bit in all of the council districts and not just on, you know, in one, because so many people complain, well, why didn't you just finish off Kings Grant?
Right.
Well, I, I'm sure that, uh, you know, the council people that represent Kings Grant, that's, that's a good idea. But the other council representatives would like to see their neighborhoods and, and so we do try and balance that evenly.
So, so I fully thank you and, and I fully empathize and understand the difficulty and prediction i- if, if it's possible, thank you.
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilman Jenkins, we can develop a communication plan with Foundry and try to get something out to the public. The X factor is the, or the unknown variable is the weather.
Sure.
Especially that time of year and sometimes it can be delayed. So that means we sort of have to double down on the communication and keep providing updates more in real time, you know.
Sure.
Muhammad Ali said everybody has a plan until they're punched in the mouth. Well, you know, we'll have a plan for our paving schedule, but as weather and other variables, uh, come into play, we may have to adjust.
Sure, thank you very much.
Do we have a consensus to move this to legislation?
Oh, do you? Sorry, just, um, briefly, uh, Director Stahl, thank you so much. Um, I know we've had some paving projects, uh, not by the town, but through the town, near the town on state roads. And when we look at the significant difference, and it's hard because you guys did a great job of getting a very competitive bid for the town. But when you look at the difference between, um, you know, C A Bean and the others, is there any concern as to, you know, us having a situation where we've seen other parts of, like, for example, we had a lot of problems on three oh one where a lot of residents were saying, what in the world's going on? It's some of the, some of the work done on it was not up to, um, maybe, maybe some of our standards of the bidders. What part of the quality and character of the, of the companies can you tell us as it relates in the process between the, the value placed and the, the work done?
Councilman, it's, it's certainly a, a very valid concern and I think we all saw the suffering that was going on with the three oh one project. I will say that all of the asphalt companies are suffering from a labor shortage and they've lost a lot of their qualified help. And so it has been, as you can see, a real quality concern. And, and to be honest, they were working with one of the large, uh, paving companies. I mean, they, they were working with F O Day, which is a very reputable, large company. To us, we've had a tougher time working with the larger companies. They get busy on the bigger jobs. We've worked with other ones of the larger companies before and had a very tough time because, you know, they'd come down and do the long streets and they'd do the ones that were easy, but they didn't want to do cul-de-sacs and they'd get all the easy stuff done. And then they'd say, well, we've got to go to another job and they'd pull off and then we're stuck. And we, and they stuck me twice. And so, um, we found that dealing with, um, a, a medium-sized company, C A Bean does have their own plant, so they do control their own asphalt and they don't, they don't have problems with supply. So Billy has always worked very hard to make sure that the town of La Plata gets what we need from them. And he's, um, been someone who's been very interested in taking care of what we need for the town of La Plata. And I think, as you can see in the past, uh, years, uh, they've done a very nice job for the town of La Plata. And I, I, I don't have a problem with recommending them because I think they've, you know, worked extremely well. And, and you can see the reflection of the bid too, that he values the town of La Plata. He knows that he can send us his bill and two weeks later, he has his check. That's very, that's something that, you know, you're not going to get in the bigger governments either. So he knows very well that we work very closely with him. We have an inspector out there, you know, the entire time he's there. We address his needs, then we have all of our frames for raising the manholes. We have the frames for raising the valve covers down on the road, we have all of those ready, we've counted them. We know how to do this and we're very particular about what we want. But I think it's a, it's a two-way street and I think that, um, because we work a little bit closer with them, uh, we don't generally have the problems that you saw down here on three oh one.
Thank you.
Great, so I'm looking for a consensus to move this to legislation so that we can, uh, perhaps approve this later on to this meeting.
Yes, I'm in favor. Good to go.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you, well, so much.
Director Stahl, this is the H, and the H U R funding is for this?
Yes, ma'am. Most of it, the, the overlay portion of it, the, we, it, it, there's not an exact rule, but I will say with the history that we have and in the fifteen years that I've been here, we have always spent all of our H U R dollars on asphalt overlay. We don't fund trucks, we don't fund positions, we fund asphalt on the roads. And we do try to, um, plan, uh, to always overlay about a mile and a half. We have about thirty lane miles of road in the town of La Plata that's owned by La Plata. And so if you're on a twenty-year overlay cycle, we pave about, uh, a mile and a half per year.
Thank you very much. Looks like the next item on our agenda is the strategic plan. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council. I believe the strategic plan in whole was included as part of the agenda packet. We have a presentation, I think Craig is going to pull up, pitting on some of the high points of the strategic plan, um, and also wrapping into, bear with me as I fumble through the sheets. These. These comprehensive plan as well. Not the specific points of the comprehensive plan, but why it's important to utilize the information within the comprehensive plan at times of budgeting. And then we'll conclude with a, I think, apparently that page didn't come off, but I think I know what it says. So we'll be okay on where, where we go from here. You have the next two slides, Craig. As part of the comprehensive plan, we were able to, or comprehensive, the strategic plan, I'm going to bounce back and forth. We're going to start with the strategic plan. We were able to develop our vision statement, which reads, the town of La Plata is an inclusive model of local government for community safety, health, amenities and financial stability that benefits all residents for generations to come. A mission statement, in partnership with the community, La Plata provides a cost effective system of government for public services. We implement industry, best practices and innovative ideas to be known as a cultural hub that respects and its strong heritage, encourages economic growth, facilitates a safe environment for a diverse community, enhances quality of life and protects its natural resources. Value proposition, La Plata is a thriving community that preserves its charm and natural resources. I'll go ahead and continue on to the core values. We'll just hit on the high points, community engagement and citizenship, accountability, respect and equity. From that, we have goals, good governance, operational excellence, economic prosperity, community identity and public service readiness. Now we'll move to the comprehensive plan. This is a source material from G F O A. The role of comprehensive plan as one of the C I P's important elements in government should consider the following. Comp plans should provide a vision for capital project plans and investments. Governments should make capital project investments decisions that are aligned to their long range comp plans. The finance officers should play an active role in early planning processes, which you can tell it's from the G F O A. And financial factors should be considered as part of the development of comp plans. What we're trying to do is make sure that there's a rational nexus between our comp plan and our strategic plan in all of our budgeting decisions, whether they be operational or capital. As our next step, staff will develop a scoring matrix to grade specific requests, both operational and capital, to assist in prioritizing F Y twenty twenty four budget requests and ensure a rational nexus to the priorities of the organization. So that's where we're at now and just wanted to keep you guys, this is not a kickoff to the F Y twenty twenty four budget process, but want to let you know. We do not have dated documents. Some organizations are, you know, their strategic plan may be from six years prior. Our strategic plan is of last year, twenty twenty two. And yeah, we are in twenty twenty three. So, and then our comprehensive plan was adopted by council in twenty twenty. So these are still very somewhat new documents. And I believe our consultant laid out a time schedule that probably in year three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, we should go back and evaluate our strategic plan to make sure it's still aligns with the organization's chosen path, if you will. But that's where we are. We're going to be, and of course, we have a new director of finance that will be starting, a director of fin, town treasurer will be starting at the end of this month. So I will be spending time with her, trying to get somewhat of a, like I say, a sheet that we can, when the department heads put in requests that we sort of grade them against the organization's strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. Director Harrington has already developed sort of all the, we'll say criteria that's are located within the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. So that will be sort of the starting step in trying to evaluate these projects, score these projects and ensure that the council is spending money in the areas that we see the greatest gain to the organization and the town as a whole.
Thank you for that. And I know we worked very hard as a team to do the strategic plan last year. There were a lot of sessions and, and a lot of wordsmithing and, and it came out, in my opinion, a very good product there that we can guide and govern by. So thank you for that overview. I know that we are getting ready and I know Martha's not going to sleep until what, Ju- July? August, we are gearing up for the fun time now. It's September to make sure that we are good stewards of the money for our, as elected officials. So with that said, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Manuel?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilman Jenkins, work for, Mr. Town Manager, thank you very much for bringing this and, and that effort. I, I'm very heartened and encouraged and thank you for that process. Just, I guess, I, I, I know this is probably a bridge too far, but in the strategic plan itself, there are some objectives. And so when, when you look at the matrix that you'll be evaluating the budget request, are there objective metrics for each of those objectives? I know we probably haven't developed those yet, right?
Yeah, I think Ms. Harrington in developing her matrix, she sort of threw those in. So there would be a checkbox for each individual element, if you will. So yeah, that's what our goal is. So we're going to have to try to refine what she has already developed and sort of streamline it.
Okay.
As part of that process.
A, a, and then would this same process and or matrix be applied to the ARPA budget or ARPA plan itself too?
Yeah, it should be. Obviously, the organization, we don't want to spend money on things that aren't you know,
Okay.
Initiatives of the organization. So yeah, it would be applied to that as well.
And then this one final observation, maybe sometime in the future. Using the matrix and this process, it can maybe be a springboard to have a, have a dashboard where we could, we could grade them every year and that could be part of the public outreach as well.
Yeah. Would be a a very good possibility. We need to get Karina in and get her up and running, but that would be something that they could track that off as much the way they do the capital improvement plan to make sure we're on course and spending. You know, the, the idea is that you budget it, we need to spend it. Now there are circumstances that can come into play. They can cause issue with that, but the idea is that, you know, if you budget the money for a specific purpose, then we need to find a way to spend money in that area.
Thank you.
I'm going to put you on the hot spot again about the referendum verification update process, Mr. Manuel.
Yeah, we, of course, our clerk was out of the office in training, not that he needs it, but end of last week. And so we had time to sort of wrap our heads around what it would take to come up with the verification of the signatures. And what we came up with was a number. And we have come with an estimate of four thousand three hundred and eighty four dollars is what, with staff time and then getting the documents from the, from the voter registration roll. There's a seventy five dollar and we are estimating for the, excuse me, there's seventy five dollars for the voter registration rolls to check the signature or segment, to check the individuals, I will say, as well as we estimated about sixty six hours of staff time. So we wanted to bring that because we were under, I think when we first brought this, we were under the assumption that the voter registrations office was going to take a larger role in verifying signers, if you will. And now that they're not, the burden's going to be on the town and just wanted to associate a price with that to, I guess, ensure that it's still the will of the council that, because we are under directive to do that. Craig's back in the office now so they can get started. But since we're meeting tonight, we thought it would be a good time to make sure that, you know, it is still the will of the council. Does that, the number surprised me.
And, and one of the things I think that we did not have the information of last week, we did not have a cost associated with it. And this is an artificial verification, because in a, the real world, if everything, if the minimum was met, then we would proceed to the next level, a minimum amount of signatures. This effort that will take sixty six hours and taxpayer money or something that is not going to enhance anyone. To me, I do not want the, the staff to spend time on this when we have so many other important, not that this isn't important, other objectives that we need to do. And, and I was one that had said, let's go with this. The more information I have, I, I am not in favor of moving on for the, for something that's not going to have a different outcome. It, this is not the way the process would do in a real referendum. It did not move forward because it wasn't enough signatures. To verify the signatures would really almost be a slap in the face because I think that the signatures would go down more because the procedure was not followed. So to me, I don't want to put salt in anybody's wound and I don't think that that is a good use of our staff's time or money. And I am in, not in favor of moving forward.
If I'm saying the procedure was not followed, not followed by me, that's what would be
Yeah, yes, yes, you're right. So when the petition came in, there, it said it had to have one thousand four hundred and seventy five signatures. And that's when it would go to the next step, where it would go to the board of elections. That threshold was not met by the petition coming in, so it stopped right there. And for us to go with, with town staff to move forward with that, that is taking away from them doing other jobs. So I am not in favor of doing that. I know Jim, have you changed your mind since last time?
I still think it's waste. I'm sorry. I don't want to use the word waste. We have met the criteria and we've done our due diligence.
Okay. Councilman Challenger?
Yeah, so I think objective numbers on the cost is helpful for us to evaluate this. And I think at the close of the meeting, our last meeting, when we were discussing this moving forward, I think Director Harrington kind of indicated that it would be a much simpler task, given the technology that we had at our hands. Mr. Manuel, that does not appear to be the case as far as verifying the signatures at all, right?
Yeah, I'll defer to the town clerk because I believe those communications were had at that level.
State annotated code speaks to the very specific steps that need to be taken. If the minimum number of signatures are, are presented in a referendum petition, then they have to be confirmed. That minimum number needs to be confirmed. And if by trying to ascertain the authenticity of those signatures, we determine that there are no longer enough, then there's no longer any reason to proceed to referendum. And the steps that need to be taken is that each one of the signatures need to be compared with what is on the rolls for the board of elections and birth dates and addresses, which are probably already confirmed by the board of elections. But all of this has to be taken step by step by name, by name, by name. And yes, there were six hundred and seventy five on one and six hundred and thirty one on the other. That still amounts to almost thirteen hundred names. We'd have to go through one at a time. If this was to do anything other but, other than reduce the number of those not names, I'd say it's an excellent exercise, but I, I concur with the mayor when she suggests it's salt in the wounds that are not necessary.
Yeah.
Not to say that we weren't willing to do it.
Yeah.
It's been an education for legislative services, I assure you.
Oh, sure. So I think operating under the premise that we had technology that was going, it was, it was a, it was not, I mean, sixty six hours is a tremendous amount of time. We're called as elected leaders to be, as Madam Mayor mentioned earlier, stewards of the money that, that our town has. I'm not in favor of it. I did want to clarify, just, it's not the procedure necessarily was not followed. We don't necessarily know about that. They, they turn in the signatures. It just was nowhere near the threshold. So to take, take money from other projects to validate how far away they were does not seem to be a good use of our resources. So I'm going to withdraw my request last meeting, just based on the weighing, you know, weighing the factors here. And it, it seems to favor in acknowledging that we, we've got a vote that the signature amount that's not close. And we shouldn't spend the town's resources, especially sixty six hours towards it. So I'm in favor of moving forward. Thanks.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Thanks for the clarification. I guess I'm slow because I'm very confused. The question, how many, how many total signatures?
Hundred and seventy five.
Okay.
And maybe one thousand four hundred and seventy in order to fulfill that requirement.
Right, but what, what I was confused was that somebody said we're unverified. So I don't, that's confusing.
Counted. But they did not go and say that Janine James, her
Lives in La Plata.
And this was her signature and this is her birthday. They counted them only. So there were six hundred and seventy five count.
Total, total
One petition.
One petition.
For the other.
Six seventy five for the other. Ever the number with a two separate number. Yeah.
So that is, and so instead of going through sixty six hours.
That part I understand now and that was, was not necessarily what was said before, but Councilman Challenger clarified that. So, you know, I will, I will withdraw my, my objection. However, in the future, I would certainly urge a lot more clarity of what the process is.
And Director Harrington did send that to us and it was pretty
That, well.
It was a chart.
Can I finish first before there's a comment? I, I'm just asking for more clarification to the public. So they fully understand what the process is. Not only the requirements to get the signatures, but the process of how we verify those signatures. Because people don't know what that is. And I, and I believe, my opinion only, that that information should be public information that's out there.
It is.
Well, well.
As a matter of fact, Councilman, I don't have the dates in front of me, but one of the organizers of the petition approached us this summer and asked how they could establish a referendum. And I directed them the Maryland State Code because under the Maryland Public Information Act, I'm obliged.
Sure. Right. And I've told people that.
And I directed them, I can get the specific report numbers and everything like that. But if a request was made, points in code were pointed out. And there's, there's a little more that we can do than that. I am obligated as the town clerk to answer whatever question is put before me. And I, I'm fairly certain I did though. But a, a, a feeling of, 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 of us against them was developed. And they were afraid to share anything with us perhaps, but I would have, because it's my job, helping find even more information. And it's there. It's in the annotated code of Maryland.
Again, my comments are not directed at criticism for anybody on the staff, whatever. I'm just suggesting that to me, that it need to be put out not only to the folks who want to do a reference, but just the general public. And perhaps in the future, it could be written in English because state law is extremely confusing.
Yes, sir, it is.
And so all I'm suggesting at sometime in the future, I, my opinion is we just didn't do a much better job of explaining the process in English and not state legislation. Because I read it so many times that my head was spinning. That's all I'm suggesting. That's it. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So it is the will of the council to not move forward with our legislative services going forward with this process. All right. Brings us to legislation. It's you again, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council. For you, Resolution twenty three dash zero one, Town Council Procedures for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning for introduction and consideration of adoption a resolution concerning revisions of Town Council Rules of Procedure procedure excuse me for the purpose of amending the rules and guidelines by which the council of the town of La Plata operates and all matters related thereto
do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-01 as presented all right I move to adopt Resolution 23-01 as presented do I have a second any discussion
yes based upon the previous discussion when the presentation was made we still have not resolved the issue of the much quorum and whether two people can actually make the decision and vote on something unless I'm really missing it but as the SIFs indicated are we only voting on this specific thing anytime we have an ordinance or a resolution it has to have a quorum and
has nothing to do with resolutions or ordinances
well but the thing is if we it's written now is still if we only have three people here two people can still vote for it can it not
only on approving the agenda on the minutes it's not on ordinances or resolutions
okay and that's saying that in here
Mr. Town Manager correct me if I'm wrong that's exactly what Director Phipps had said
Director Phipps is still here I believe so she can address the council again I don't want to miss
some people kind of dense up here I think just identifying the scope I I think
let me pull it up and look at a piece of paper because I'll be better that way I'm gonna I'm gonna look at the memo that was attached definition of process to revise rules of procedure rules of procedure that's all we're talking about by affirmative vote of a majority of quorum of town council at any meeting and immediate effectiveness of revision so if you had as it stands right now if you have three council members here total two of you could vote for a change to the Town Council Rules of Procedure
only that that particular issue
on the on this document on the attached document the document that's attached to Resolution 23-01 only within that document you could change a procedure that's outlined in that document you could not going going way broad now as far as adopting legislation you would need a quorum to do that just as you do now nothing is changing where that goes
is a quorum but what is it a majority of quorum to adopt it you got a quorum of three two out of the three agree one doesn't can they pass that legislation
if you have a on any at any given meeting if you have a quorum you can conduct the business of the council
you can conduct the business of the council can you vote on something that's going to change legislation with two people voting that's my concern
but they're two different things that doesn't impact this one but
well if this one is the rules and procedures that means everything else we do
section 6.1 paragraph A three members of the town council councils shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business no ordinance shall be passed resolution adopted nor any other action taken without the favorable vote of a majority of the members of the town council
and that's two people at that point in time
oh a majority of the members of the town council
so a majority of the members of the town council whether present or not present is three
three okay then I I like that
no vote or question decided at a stated meeting shall be considered at a special meeting unless all members are present and three of them concur
yes I buy that
all right
I'm sorry
that's all right
further discussion I have a motion and it has been properly seconded all in favor please indicate by saying aye
aye
aye any opposed
no
nay
no
okay Mr. Town Clerk could you please take a roll call on the votes
yes Madam Mayor Councilman Goldsmith
aye
Councilman Challenger
nay
Mayor James Councilwoman Bryant Ward
aye
and Councilman Jenkins
nay
with the account of three to do to two the the honest habit
thank you very much it brings us to our next resolution Resolution 23-03
yes Madam Mayor as you stated Resolution 23-03 FY23 Road Paving and Overlay Project for introduction and consideration of adoption a resolution concerning FY23 Road Paving and Overlay Project for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the paving and striping of streets at various locations within the town limits according to the town's road maintenance priority list
thank you very much do I have a motion to accept Resolution 23-03 as presented Madam Mayor
you got a better voice
that we adopt Resolution 23-03 FY23 Road Paving and Overlay Project do I have a second
second
any discussion all in favor please indicate by saying aye
aye
any opposed motion carries and for introduction only is Ordinance 23-03
yes Madam Mayor an ordinance concerning public ethics code revision for the purpose of amending chapter 20 ethics to implement changes mandated by state law and to specify investigation hearing and decision procedures
thank you very much all right that brings us to new business commission reports we'll go down the line Councilman Goldsmith
the we have not met again it's last week
Councilman Challenger
likewise we have a meeting in a few days I'll have a report for you next time around thank you
Councilman Bryant Ward all right Councilman Jenkins
thank you Madam Mayor Councilman Jenkins Ward for the Parks and Recreation Commission met virtually on January the 11th 2023 we had a robust discussion about the Wills Park Improvement Project Pocket Park in St. Mary's Avenue and what the county is doing for the adjacent property Wills Park which they're now calling La Plata Farm Park so we're Director Phipps has been coordinating with their Parks and Recreation Director about our plans for the Wills Park and having an amphitheater and possibly two connection with trail systems so that we appreciate that a positive discussion there was a there's a series of maps that have been prepared that show the town parks which which hopefully be available soon we talked about the upcoming recreational system within Pine Grove and hopefully we'll get some additional information about what that product will be and what it'll look like and what facilities will be in Pine Grove talked about Tillman Lake this summer we did talk about the need for another Parks and Recreation Commission member and actually this afternoon we received Director Phelps will receive an online application for another member so hopefully we'll bring that forward shortly that new member after the chair can review it and and we can all look at that we did get an update on the bike status the radio station road bikeway that's under design still in the design phase but hopefully that'll be submitted shortly to the state and hopefully construction in 2024 update to Director Stahl's project on the dam improvements in Tillman Lake and how that would affect any citizen activity there and then there was a brief discussion about there was not a citizen survey in the current fiscal year but if there is one in the next budget year could there be any question with respect to any Parks and Recreation questionnaire if 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 there is in fact going to be a citizen survey and then talked about pickleball courts that are in La Plata there are some in Wills Park and then there's some in Silverland Park and Clark's Run and then we got an update on the various upcoming celebrate La Plata activities in April of this year 2023 and then the chair will also and will also be looking at again the 2011 Town Master Plan for Parks and Recreation and bringing forward potential projects as part of our budget deliberations that start in February and with that I will and that report's up to you any questions you have
and for my upcoming events and my report several members yesterday of the police and and town staff and members of our council attended they on their day off they went and attended the MLK breakfast over at North Point so thank you for representing the town of La Plata we also had I was up in Annapolis yesterday watching Brooke Learman become the 34th comptroller of the state of Maryland and Hearst wearing in tomorrow we get a new governor and a new Lieutenant Governor Governor Westmore and Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller will be sworn in and then for council we will have should you your schedule allow you to attend a ribbon cutting on the 28th which is a Saturday from 12 it's going to be at 12 o'clock it's Central Station that is going to be a yoga studio that is opening up right here on Howard Street and 12 o'clock will be the ribbon cutting and they will have a grand opening from 12 to 3 so please put on your yoga types and participate in that and we are excited to have another business opening in town and with that that is my report and I move to adjourn our meeting at 7:21 thank you very much Jim I think you missed the signee one
I'm sorry I thought there's only one there I'm sorry I'll come down and get under 90 minutes
let's look through that presentation